Just for the record, my name is Tom Schuler. I'm the chairman of the Stockbridge Zoning Board of Appeals. Maybe the other members of the board can introduce themselves.
I'm Patricia Andrew from 11 Cherry Street in Stockbridge.
Miles Moffett for Train Hill Road, Stockbridge.
Catherine Chester, 5 Church Street, Stockbridge.
Mark Mills, 15 Cherry Street.
And Mark is sitting in via Zoom. Mark was here live for the first meeting, which was two weeks ago. And this is a hearing on appeal filed by the adlers pursuant to zoning bylaw 7.2.1 in response to an enforcement order issued by our building inspector on November 20th, 2023. I guess before we begin, I just want to note for the record that we, when we disbanded or adjourned our meeting two weeks ago, I had asked the parties and any interested parties to provide us with any written materials, legal arguments, factual arguments, documents, anything of that nature at some point within a week of this hearing. What I got was an email response from an attorney who's representing the Superior Oil, which was sent to me this morning by Teresa. And then I got a five-page document, letter from attorney Arianti representing the applicants. Quite frankly, I'm a rather miffed and a little disappointed because we are a volunteer board. And while I had the luxury at least of trying to digest the letter that I received this morning, other members of our board, one guy is at a job site, another woman showing houses, and another board member is dealing with young children. And you know, this isn't a law firm situation where we have an army of people that can sit here and review and analyze and research all the arguments being advanced by the various parties. Unfortunately or fortunately, depending on how you want to look at it, we are not in a position to make legal decisions or make legal, pass legal judgments on some of the legal arguments advanced by the parties. And in both of these memorandums, there are significant legal arguments being advanced. And what we do in that situation, because we can't substitute our judgment for the judgment of town council, we have town council review case citations and legal arguments advanced and give us a sense or an indication as to how legitimate or accurate or persuasive they may be and help us frame some of these legal arguments in the circumstances where we can then make factual determinations based on the evidence before us. When we get information like this at the 11th and a half hour, we're really not in a position to do our job. And part of my problem here is we are a volunteer board. This is our second meeting. And I really don't like the idea, without conferring with the other members of the board, of saying, let's come back a third time so that we can let our town council digest some of the arguments that have been advanced by the attorneys. That being said, I'm going to defer to the board as to what they want to do on that subject. And I guess my suggestion would be, I'd like to hear from the, the parties. And perhaps they could start by at least outlining for us the arguments that have been advanced in their, in their respective submissions. That being said, I think at this point, I'm going to ask the council for Superior Oil. Perhaps since you gave us your document on Monday or Monday or this morning, we'll let you go first and then we'll let Mr. Arianti address some of the many issues he addressed in his five-page document, which we received at 5:15.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, my name is Peter Tam. Attorney of the Sun Source in Boston on behalf of Superior Plus. I believe Bill Martin, attorney for Berkshire Gas is available remotely. So he may be checking in. First, I'd like to say I, I wasn't here at the last session. So my apologies for being unable to attend. But we did convene with me this evening Jeff Stanton, the general manager at Superior Plus, Jason Wilde, the regional manager, and Ray Cody, the manager of the location at issue here at Stockbridge. We did submit what I would characterize as an attempt at a thoughtful response on the 16th. If that only got into your hands on Monday this morning, I apologize.
Well, well, think about it. There's, there's a holiday on Monday and you had two weeks to do it. I don't have a lot of patience for that or sympathy, to be honest with you.
I appreciate that, Mr. Chairman, and I don't dispute that. And I appreciate the position that you and the board are in. We had understood that there would be a memo of law that'd be provided by the appellant. We haven't seen it. So I'm not sure, you know, how I can respond to their argument that this is an unlawful use without understanding their argument. What we intended to do very simply in our, in our letter is outline how the use is compliant without citations and memo of law with the existing two special permits. And I guess quite simply, you don't have to delve into our memo to consider it in this light. There was a special permit that was granted by your select board in 1973 that authorized the initial 30,000 gallon storage tank. In 1981, that storage tank was expanded to three storage tanks with a total capacity of 90,000 gallons. I don't believe the storage is at issue here. The storage remains the same, storage of propane on this property on Lee Road. Now, I don't know the appellant's argument, but from what I understand from their initial correspondence to the building inspector, and I'll allow them to, to make their argument. But my understanding is that they believe that the use has fundamentally changed so that it is today unlawful. While the building inspector issued an enforcement order, immediate action was taken by Superior Plus to address the issues that the building inspector identified. And the site is in compliance. The storage remains storage of propane. So I think the essential issue, the one that is before you is whether the delivery of propane by truck is at variance with the original 1973 as modified by the 81 special permit. And I would maintain it's not. It's the same use. It's the, it's essentially, there, there has been an evolution. And it's easy to think about in this way. In 1973, when the select board issued the first special permit, that propane was used to supplement the natural gas in the pipeline. Over time, the need increased. And in 81, the select board issued a new special permit that authorized the expansion of that use, again, with delivery to customers through the pipeline. At some point after 1981, but not that long after, we have anecdotal evidence, the need to supplement that pipeline diminished because of the abundance of natural gas. Our predecessors, in interest to the site, began delivering that propane by truck. And today that amounts to three to six bobtail trucks, which are small propane trucks during the winter time and maybe a truck a day during the summertime. And that propane is delivered to residential propane customers here in Stockbridge. It heats their homes. If this location were not here over all these years, they would not have that propane. So the storage is not, as I understand it, at dispute. Perhaps it is, but I have not seen an issue with the storage of 90,000 gallons of propane site. The 1973 permit, we've scrutinized very carefully, and I'm sure you have as well. It contains essentially the minutes of that meeting. It's almost a question and answer session with the applicant, a Mr. Hurdle at the time. And as I read it, it's almost like a living minutes of the meeting. It's very detailed by the secretary. He explained what the need was. And those minutes have been taken by the appellant to say, that is all you can do. You know, when Mr. Hurdle says, we might use it for approximately, and he estimates, I'm paraphrasing, approximately four emergencies a year and some number of days. I believe the appellant submit that that's all we can do. And that, that delivery by truck as opposed to delivery via the pipeline is somehow at odds with that. And I would submit it's the same use. And furthermore, I would submit that in 1981, the select board dramatically expanded that, that, that storage use, 30,000 gallons to 90,000. So even if you were to consider those as limitations in the 73 permit, 81 has no such constraints. And in fact, the board tripled the size of the storage. And all along, in, in each of the decisions and in the plans that were approved, this propane fuel is being delivered by tractor trailer. And it's described in detail. So trucks are entering the site, trucks are leaving the site, large trucks. The, the site was developed with, and this is, this is hard for me to read. But this is the plan that was, is dated 1973. And I'll walk you through it because it's hard to read. So my apologies. But this shows a driveway coming off of Lee Road and the facility as it exists, as it was proposed in 73. The note in the driveway says 35 foot wide road to meet quote highway specifications. There is a turnaround, it's almost a cul-de-sac within the site. And it says, I read this earlier, truck unloading. So there's a truck turnaround and a truck unloading. So the idea that trucks are somehow prohibited from the site just flies in the face of common usage. If the board approved a very significant propane storage facility here and they contemplated trucks entering and exiting the site, it's not anything but an accessory use to the storage, to allow for delivery by trucks. There is no restriction or condition in either of the special permit that says that, you know, you must connect only exclusively and deliver this propane via the pipeline. So, you know, I, I don't think that the board has to go beyond the terms of the two permits. An ordinary usage. I mean, if you, if you draw this to its conclusion, if the, if the propane can only be stored on site and the board were to decide, no trucks. Well, number one, how do you get it there? Right? Tractor trailers have always delivered it and have left the site. And then what do you do with the propane if you can't deliver it? I suppose, I suppose that Superior could keep it on site.
Please mute yourselves.
Superior could maintain the propane on site and then unload it. Operation, there's no salespeople here. This is truly propane storage and distribution, as was always contemplated. There is a different delivery mechanism, yes. And we don't dispute that. This has been going on for decades.
If you're online.
So, Mr. Chairman, I, I think, you know, I'm prepared to answer any question and the entire Superior and Berkshire team are available to address any questions. I apologize for you getting our, our letter in advance. But I think it's, I intentionally did not include any case law because I think it's a very clear case of an accessory use to the uses that were permitted by 81 and 73, which is storage and distribution of propane, period. But I'm very willing and, and prepared to answer any questions that you and the board might have.
Do you have any questions, Catherine?
Maybe eventually, but we can.
Do you have a question? Okay. I have a question.
Sure.
In, in the letter, I think it says, it describes that owner of the property is still Berkshire Gas. And you represent Superior who was leasing?
Yeah.
The property?
Yes. And they've made a pretty significant investment in safety upgrades since their time. They acquired the assets of a company called NGL in 2018. And since then, they've, they've spent several hundred thousand dollars in investing in upgrades to wiring, safety systems, a number of other areas on the property.
Who, who owns the actual infrastructure on the property then now than Superior or Berkshire Gas?
I believe it's Berkshire.
Berkshire owns the property.
And then, and the, and the tanks?
Yes.
Thank you.
I got a couple of questions for you. I mean, it looks like the thrust of your letter essentially is to suggest that the issue, that you're defining the issue as being one that relates to the manner in which this propane is distributed. And I think if you look at from the narrow parameters of that argument and you look at the language in the select board, the two select board hearings, I certainly understand where the, there's an incredible argument that is contemplated that this, the way that this storage tank is filled up or emptied is going to be via, via trucks. They talk about that in the hearing. And it's not for me to be making the arguments necessarily on behalf of the appellant. But how do you address the issue that it would appear at least in these minutes that what they're talking about is storage for, for a supply to be tapped into in the event of some sort of emergency, i.e. extended cold weather, et cetera. And it seems that at least if you look at the minutes, it's contemplated you're talking about maybe a 24-day period where there might be a fair amount of activity in order to distribute propane to the surrounding towns because of, you know, weather circumstances and the like. I do believe that there, you know, what do you say to the argument that what we're dealing with here is a significant increase in that distribution, if you will, of propane from that site to residential customers? I understand the argument that you're making that yes, in 1973, it's contemplated that in cold weather situations, trucks are going to come in, deliver propane, trucks are going to exit with propane to deliver to residential customers. But it also seems to say, at least in the minutes, that they're talking about circumstances where it might be for 24 days at a time. And it's in more emergent circumstances, not in a sort of regular course of 80-day operations. And I guess I'd like to see if you could address that issue.
Well, I can, I can try, Mr. Chairman. We had thought about this as well and went back at the same language because I think the language that you referenced was cited by the appellant earlier. And I believe it's from the 73 special permit. And it's, um, what I would characterize as minutes. These aren't intended to be conditions, but secretary of the, of the select board at that time took scrupulous notes. And those are reflected as part of the decision from 1973. And the 20, you know, Mr. Hurdle is, is asked, or in, in describing the activity, he describes what he thinks the, and he, and he says, let me read it to you. He said that the stored propane would be blended with natural gas coming through the pipeline. And the basic purpose of the installation was so it would be a standby for the natural gas in the pipeline. It would only be used on average of perhaps 24 days per year. And that in case of emergency, it would be in use for about four days at most. Goes on to say the propane would come overland in trucks owned by Berkshire Gas from Renesler, New York. I'm sure that's not the case anymore either. I mean, the, the board isn't going to require that the trucks only come from.
No, no, we understand. I mean, let's not be too literal. We understand the concept, the concept being trucks are going in and out of the site, so.
So, so that was 73 with 30,000 gallons. In 81, the board approved 90,000 in total.
Right.
So, and there's no such reference to limitations in the 81 special permit. And, you know, tonight's a cold night. This is not unusual that, but, but the fact of the matter is the delivery method has changed. Now, I submit to you, Mr. Chair, that this is not a, a major change. This has been going on not only for decades, but we're talking about smaller, what are so-called bobtail trucks. These are single axle trucks that, as Jason Wilde, the regional operator, operations manager tells me, there is approximately three to six vehicle trips coming in and out by truck on a winter day. The limitation on use is really based on capacity, right? The board authorized 90,000. That 90,000 gallons, whether it was distributed by the line or by a smaller truck, is going to require some manpower. So there's trucks entering for staff, right? Back in 1973. And they're parking on site and they're introducing the natural, the propane into the natural gas system. I think the, the, the board needs to appreciate that when the select board authorized the use, they were principally concerned about the storage. And you see this in their focus on safety, on the operation. There was never a concern that, about the method of, of delivery. It wasn't contemplated to be delivered by trucks back then because this was what the intention was. The secretary took Mr. Hurdle's notes in terms of how he expected the operation to run at that time. And that's the way the operation ran until the eighties. So, you know, I don't think there's a dramatic departure, Mr. Chairman, from the amount of traffic that's coming in. Clearly, truck traffic was contemplated. Truck traffic existed in 1973 and it continues today. And this is long before the appellants bought their property. This was out in the open and it's been occurring without issue. The, the, as I understand it, I'm coming late to this. So you'll correct me or I know the appellant or their attorney will correct me. But the crux of this dispute appears to have stemmed from my client cutting back trees and natural buffer as was required by the fire department. And that seemed to have precipitated this dispute.
Yeah, well, the problem is we, that's not our issue.
I know.
Okay. So for you to make that as an observation as to what precipitated this is, from my perspective, not at all relevant to the proceedings. So bottom line is we have a circumstance here where there, there's been an appeal, an enforcement order. And the claim, as I understand it being made here by the appellant is that the present current use violates the special permit. I understand your arguments with respect to the means of distribution and this, that, and the other thing. And I certainly understand and certainly mentioned in the minutes about trucks coming in from Selkirk or wherever the heck that is, in and out. I grant you all that. I guess the question is, and I think the argument being advanced here is that the level of activity at this site is significantly different and more than was contemplated when, when these, when these special permits were granted. And I, I can only cite the information that's contained here in the minutes where they talk about 24 days of using it when it's cold and 4.7 days of storage in the case it gets super cold. I understand all that. I guess, you know, and maybe this is an issue that you have to, in fairness to you, have to take up after you hear more from the applicant. But part of my problem as a, as a, as a board chairman is it's not our job to get you up to speed because you missed the first day.
No, and I, I don't.
No, and that's, that's the issue I'm facing. It's like, look, I, I kind of understand you're a little bit of a disadvantage, but, you know, well, not really, because you could have been here. And as a result, you're fashioning arguments on stuff that maybe was said and maybe wasn't said. And I have some sympathy for that.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm very prepared for this. My, my apology to the board was for not being here, but I'm very prepared. I just don't want to be presumptuous and, and read into anything about the last session. And you can understand that I am a little bit at odds because I don't have anything. This is not our burden, right? We're not the appellants here. But I'm very prepared, as, as we've submitted, to explain exactly what we think, why this is in compliance with both the 1973 as modified by the 81 special permit. And I would submit to you this, if the focus on the, you know, Mr. Hurdle's estimation, estimation in 1973 from meeting minutes, not from a condition, but from meeting minutes of 1973, that, that was what he anticipated might be the case.
Well, that's, that's your reading. Okay, that's one interpretation.
Let me, let me try to finish. Because you asked me specifically if, if I think that today's use is somehow more impactful. And I can appreciate your skepticism. But I would submit that in 1981, the select board authorized the tripling in size and quantity. And that presumably with it, there, there comes additional impact in terms of usage. It's not like they're pumping all of that propane into the natural gas lines during approximately 24 days of a year. So suddenly that could be 72 days a year plus emergencies. We're speculating. But, but what I, what I would say is that this has been an active use. I would not characterize three to six small trucks entering and exiting on a winter day as excessive, considering there's tractor trailers that have been authorized to enter and exit. And that the use has been in, in, in use actively for many decades now. And that, I, I guess fundamentally, Mr. Chairman, the truck traffic here, if that is what we're focusing on, is incidental or accessory to the storage use, which was the prime focus. It's what's on the permits.
Well, I have a question.
Yeah, as do I, but go ahead.
So as I read the original permits, it was to bring gas, propane to the site to supplement gas in the pipeline, not to then distribute out from the site by truck to customers. Permits are both written that way, to supplement the gas that's in the pipeline. At what point did the pipeline become separated from these tanks and this becomes strictly just a, you know, distributor for propane gas to other customers and not to supplement the natural gas pipe?
Sorry, Jeff Stanton, Superior. Sorry, Jeff Stan, Superior Plus, um, I don't know the exact date, but it was first year gas, uh. Started a propane operation, propane distribution operation in the eighties. Uh, we tried to research it. We couldn't find exact dates of when they transferred from supplementing natural gas to. Delivering propane to residential and commercial customers via bobtail. Uh, but it was in the eighties. We do know that.
Probably after eighty one.
Correct, after eighty one, but.
So the seventy three permit and the eighty one permit were to. Provide storage and then increase storage to supply gas into the pipeline, not to customers.
Well.
By truck.
Not by truck.
Right.
But the propane is essentially introduced and Jeff and others can. Are clearly to this, but it ends up in customers' homes and it's burned in customers' homes, right? The, the propane mixed with the natural gas and is ultimately distributed to customers' homes. So.
By the pipeline.
By the pipeline. And that was the original.
That was the original attempt, and now it's different.
Well, now it's being delivered.
Different, yeah, right.
Well, it's still propane fundamentally and it's still propane storage.
Right, but it's not going through a pipe, it's going over a road by truck. Just to be clear, that's.
Yeah, no, no dispute there.
Okay.
But, but if you look at it. The essential use was propane storage.
Right.
And there is no restriction. I mean, if you, if you look at those minutes, uh, from nineteen seventy three. They are minutes, they're not cast as conditions. Right?
Right, right, it explains.
And so, so.
The plan to run the business that way.
Right.
Right.
And, and I, I do this quite a bit and I'm sure you're before applicants all the time for a, a special permit or a variance. When I have a traffic report, my traffic engineer sits with me and he says, I anticipate based on my, um. Engineering experience and the count studies done. That this project will impact, uh, will create a hundred and fifty new. You know, uh, truck trips in a day at this particular intersection. And that's reflected in meeting minutes. That doesn't become a condition that says now that you've granted that special permit, you can never exceed that. It was an estimate and, and he, Mr. Hurdle claims, he says it was an estimate. Given in nineteen seventy.
Right, but again, that was to bring, just, it's a nuance and you can, we can move on to a different topic, but that was to bring gas to the site. Not distribute gas from the site to customers.
Well, the gas is distributed.
If you did a traffic study, right, so a traffic study then would be. Counting trucks in to fill up the tanks, not, not to count all the trucks leaving to the customers, right?
A, a traffic study would count both. The truck traffic as well as the vehicular traffic.
Right, but it would be based on two different kinds of models of business. Yeah.
But my only point is.
That's my only question.
I appreciate.
All right, thanks.
May I? Um, putting the truck traffic aside. And putting the meeting minutes aside for a moment, in nineteen eighty one, in the application. The application asks you to quote, describe fully use intended. And Berkshire Gas wrote additional storage to increase supplementary gas supply. That word was absent in the nineteen seventy three permit and application. And it's put in legally. That, does that have any sort of conditional effect on the use that's being permitted?
No, we went back to both the seventy three and eighty one zoning bylaws. And, um, the fact that it is supplemental, I mean, we're. I don't know. I mean, it's essentially supplementing the natural gas. And this is what we're just talking about, but the storage is what was key to that, that permit. So I saw that same language. I don't see that as, as limiting. I, I saw it as a descriptor. Right? And so fundamentally, if you think about. Well, the board authorized ninety thousand gallons of storage. How that propane is delivered ultimately. Is not specified as a, as a, as a limiting factor. It doesn't say you have to only use this storage. To, um, distribute it through the natural gas line.
So you, are you arguing that? The. Use that is being requested in the nineteen eighty one permit is absolutely the same as the nineteen seventy three permit? And there are zero conditions based on the minutes or the use that's even requested?
I don't, I don't mean to argue because this is, this is really important. This is Superior Plus has been out here since two thousand eighteen and before that, Osterman and Berkshire. This use is ongoing, it's historic at this point. The. I don't know if I quite understood your, your question. Redirect me if, if I don't get it, but. Um, there is nothing in the eighty one on the terms of the permit itself. Where you'd expect there to be conditions that says you can only use this propane storage. For distribution through the gas line. Does that answer your questions?
I think, yes and no. I mean, I think we all are aware that there are no explicit conditions. If there were, that would make our job as a board very easy. So we're trying to understand. We're looking for the conditions and the descriptors where. Elsewhere in the materials and part of that is what. The applicant Berkshire Gas, the applicant of the special permit, not this hearing. Asks for a specific type of storage, so I'm trying to tease out whether that is in fact a limiting condition. They are asking for a particular type of storage, namely, storage of supplementary gas. So trying to see how that impacts the actual use. You're claiming, I believe if I am understanding you correctly, that. The only use is, is storage and what happens. To the gas after it's stored is not relevant to the permit and is not restricted in any ways. I think that's your argument.
I guess I would, I, I read the same words that you read and I said it was interesting because it wasn't in seventy three. But it was, um, a descriptor that was put in. Probably by the clerk, I'm speculating in eighty one. That accurately described how, uh, the storage was intended to be, uh, used at that time. I, I, I guess I would say fundamentally. Propane gas storage is continued today. And if it cannot be, if the board were to determine that. That trucking is not permitted. To deliver that natural gas. Then what could, what storage could you do based on these permits, right? Um, you could. Truck this in by tractor trailer, you could store it. And then I suppose you could remove it by tractor trailer to another location. By a tractor trailer as opposed to a bobtail. That would be the logical conclusion. So, I just, um. I, I fundamentally, I know, I, I'd sound like a broken record, but. If you can have propane storage and you cannot use trucks to deliver it. It just seems inherent, right? It's, it's accessory to storage use.
Well, most of it was still continued to be.
Connected to the pipeline, right?
Pipeline disconnected.
Right.
Under a license, under a different license amendment or something? I don't know why it was, or when it was disconnected. And the purpose changed, right?
The fundamental purpose didn't change. Propane storage, period. That's what the board was focused on in both seventy three and eighty one.
Right.
And, and descriptors, the descriptors in the minutes are interesting, but they're not limiting.
Right, okay.
Just one, I have one other question, maybe we can turn it over and let the applicant say. I noticed in your letter, you made reference, um, to, uh. The minutes, uh, which I know you've told me before weren't controlling, but. Certainly seemed to be helpful for the reason you put it in your letter dated February sixteenth. That at the time the propane was delivered by truck. And it was introduced into a national gas pipeline that ran over the property for delivery to residential. Uh, customers, you go on and say the minutes also recount the history of the site. Which includes the property being used as a distribution center by Pittsfield Gas in nineteen thirties. At which time there was a storage tank, uh, utilized and there's no pipeline. Uh, to, and, and this was used to deliver, uh. Presumably to customers. And you go on to say the records established the property's been used for storage and delivery of heating fuel to customers for nearly a century. I guess my question is, are you making a claim that this is? A, uh, you know, a pre-existing non-conforming use?
Quite the opposite.
Okay, well, I'm just puzzled then why it was included in your, your, uh, uh, letter, right? Cause it, it wasn't clear to me because I know there, there is some reference in the minutes. Uh, some vague comments about what it might have been, uh, used for in the nineteen thirties, but.
I guess, Mr. Chairman, um, it was probably superfluous. But, um, I, I would make it very clear that our position is. This is both, I'm speaking for both Berkshire and Superior Plus. That the existing use that's been ongoing for decades. If in full compliance with the terms of the eighty one and the seventy three permit. And that the reference to the existing industrial use is on the site. Was simply to give the board some context that, uh. This has been, uh, an active industrial use on site. For many years, at least insofar as it's referenced in those minutes. That's all.
Fair enough. So anything else you want to add? Cause at this point I was, I was inclined to perhaps let, uh, the applicant, uh. Address some of the issues that we raised and. There is a fairly lengthy memorandum that we've received. Perhaps he can address some of the topics outlined in that memorandum.
Chairman, I, I appreciated the opportunity, um, to speak with you and, uh, I appreciate a copy of this as well. So, thank you.
Okay, well, Tom, thank you. Um, thank you to the board. I apologize as well for the late. Last few days have been a little weather, just made it here by a. Minor miracle, but, um. Uh, I could have submitted earlier and I apologize for that. Um, I just wanted to touch on first a few points. That counsel, uh, made. That I wanted to bring to the board's attention. First is that despite the fact that. That there's. Appellant. In this current action to acquire or require again, from our perspective. Enforcement of the zoning bylaw and specifically the. Scope and the terms of the nineteen seventy three and eighty one special permits. The burden really falls truly from a legal perspective on the owner, the user of the property. Owners Berkshire Gas, current users Superior Gas. And they have yet to demonstrate by any way, shape or form. That the use of the property as has been described with the exception of. Storage tank use, which was permitted explicitly, not on its face by the nineteen seventy three and nineteen eighty. Uh, they've yet to demonstrate that they have any right whatsoever to conduct the additional delivery use. And so. That issue outstanding, um, I, I think still falls on, on the user and the applicant. Why we filed this appeal, because we did not feel the building inspector's. Enforcement letter. Properly identified the issues. That I had raised first in my, my original letter. Second was, um, I, I appreciated counsel's argument. But I think the argument would be, and specifically, the argument that. There are other uses, there is kind of a, a broad spectrum of uses that should be allowed. Pursuant to grant of the nineteen seventy. In that the use contemplated should not be limited to the storage use, the tank use. Which was one and then two additional tanks. To serve. The specific. Facts or that were contained in the meeting minutes that primarily came out of the nineteen seventy three meeting. I think counsel's argument would be more viable and arguably appropriate. Those meeting minutes were lengthy, which were. Well documented by secretary or whomever at the meeting. Included any reference to any other use whatsoever. Either by Berkshire Gas, Berkshire Gas's representative or. The select board at that year. But there was no reference to any other. If there was a pre-existing use that had been ongoing at the property. At the time, seventeen thirty permit. It was never discussed. It was never raised. It was never contemplated by the board in nineteen seventy three. It's never discussed, it's never raised, it was never contemplated by the board in nineteen eighty one. The only. Subjects that were. Brought up as. Requests for special permits because at the time in this residential district. This use, any propane fuel business, et cetera, utility business use was not permissible. By right, rather required permit from the select board. There was no discussion of any, other than that being storage. Those detailed minutes identified an intensity of use. They identified twenty four truck visits per year. And identified or truck traffic visits per year and identified. Um, you know, emergency use situations. For these supplemental storage tanks in the event of. A dire need by the public, by the customers of the gas company. If. The, you know, uh, uh, delivery aspect of the business at that time was an important and critical part of the business. It seems like a significant omission. When they're asking to use the property in a manner that is not otherwise allowed. They had two wacks at it. Seventy three and eighty one. Looks like they could have brought it up again. That, you know, we're also using this, uh, in nineteen eighty one, we're also using the property for this use. Would like to be, uh, like to have our permit amended since they essentially filed the, the subsequent, basically a new permit. And ensure that we have the right going forward to conduct our business in this manner to do delivery. Because of the fact that doing the delivery has a distinct direct impact. On the intensity of the use at the property, intensity of the use to the others, the intensity of the use. Three to six truck traffics a day, whether it's for half a year or the whole year. When you do the math, which is part of what I did in my memo, adds up to a whole lot more than twenty four days a year. Plus emergency ones, or four days, whatever. Yep, this was an omission and it, it was a big one because this use. Is used now only, uh, by Superior Gas. Is not permitted by the special permits, nineteen seventy three. It's no longer allowed whether by special permit or otherwise in this residential district. Um, and. I think it's not surprising that there are concerns about whether or not they'll be able to continue this use of the property. One question that counsel raised was, well, well, what, what do you do at the property if the trucking? Business is no longer permitted. The local pigtail truck deliveries are no longer permitted. I would argue that you would adhere to the use that was allowed by the special permits. In volume and intensity. And not permitted to continue a use that never permitted, but was required special permit. Allow that use and is no longer way, shape or form. And, you know, my memo largely restates the information that was submitted prior, my prior letters, Adler's prior letters in that we had discussed at the prior meeting, with the exception of, as I started to get the feeling after hearing the term latches, you know, thrown around at the last meeting, that there would be some type of argument that would use that theory in order to allow the progression or scope increase of the use of the property. And, you know, it's really not relevant. Counsel has stated that that is not the intent to rely on that as a method of justifying existing use. I think that's correct because there are permits that clearly and distinctly identify what are the permissible uses. But I included that that test, if you will, because I think even if you apply the non-conforming use test, the change in use as we know it from nineteen seventy-three to now would fail that test for a permissible increase in use under the theory of an existing non-conforming use and growth.
Which this is not, Mr. Chairman.
That's correct.
Are you saying, do you have any questions with Nick?
Tom.
Mark, I'm sorry.
I have a question. As I understand this now, Berkshire Gas began doing some of this home delivery from the site in the nineteen eighties. As I recall, the Adler's moved in somewhere around nineteen ninety. Correct me if I've got that wrong.
We have the licenses.
And I'm just wondering after, after, you know, thirty years of their being at that location with this activity going on to some degree, what changed to, to bring this forward now at this time?
I can answer that. Yeah, we didn't know what was going on. I mean, we didn't, we didn't know what, what was in the permits. I mean, back in August, when these gas tanks were all discovered in the back there and Superior asked to have their trucks permitted and their tanks permitted back there, we asked to take a look at the permits. So we had no idea what was going on back there. So that's why.
And, and describe for us as, as the homeowners, Mr. Adler, what you've observed in terms of the intensity of activity over the last thirty years.
I've noticed an increase of activity as far as the hours of the day and the number of trucks. More weekends than there used to be. That's what I've noticed, so.
And, and what would you?
I would also say that, that while it does decrease in the summertime, there are a lot of customers, large camps and things like that, that use propane for, you know, heating swimming pools and things like that. So there is, there's still quite a bit of use for propane in the summertime while it is less.
And how, how would you like to see this resolved? What is your ideal outcome to all this?
Well, my, my ideal outcome is that it goes back to what it was permitted to do, which is it's a peak shaving plant. When I moved in there, Andy Mora, who used to be the plant manager there, that's what his description of it was to me when we moved in, was that it was a peak shaving plant. Today, it's not a peak shaving plant. Today, it's a propane depot. I mean, you can put a propane depot anyplace. That's commercial industrial, I would imagine. But this, this plant was put where it is specifically to tap off of that line. It's my understanding is a peak shaving plant. It is no longer doing that.
Okay, thank you.
No, no questions. What do you think? Do you think we have enough information? I'd like to do. One of the issues I will tell you from my own perspective is there has been a suggestion here by Attorney Arianti that the burden here is on the occupier of the property to prove that this is a permitted use. My understanding is that this whole thing emanated as a result of an appeal from a zoning enforcement letter sent by the building commissioner who made a certain finding with respect to the amount of storage that was there being in excess of what was in the special permit, but no made, no finding that the use that he observed was in violation of nineteen eighty-three or, I mean nineteen seventy-three or the nineteen eighty-one permit. And the way I looked at it was that it would seem to me that the burden would be then on the applicant that's making the appeal in this set of circumstances. I'm going to want to get some clarification from town council with respect to that because that may be a significant issue. Because that's not how I understand it. And I don't want to be in a position, frankly, where I'm making a decision if I don't understand who has the burden of proof.
Mr. Chairman, per the record, I understand it as you do. So my frustration that I shared with you at the beginning was because I don't know what to respond to other than letters to the building inspector from November and December of last year. I'm getting this this evening.
Well, we all got it this evening, okay? Just like I got your piece of documentation this morning. So we've all talked about how irritating this is. And I can assure you, if you're annoyed, I'm four times more annoyed than you are, at both of you. So I don't want to hear any more about how you're at a disadvantage or how he's at a disadvantage. We're in a situation here, we have to make a decision. And I don't want to make, I don't want to feel, I don't want to feel any discomfort about the level of information I have and the level of understanding that I have before I make any kind of decision. And I do have a significant question with respect to who has the burden of proof here. And my inclination, and I don't like to do this without consulting with my fellow board members, would be to suspend this, come back next week and vote. My plan between now and then would be to have my, our town council review the issues raised by Attorney Arianti in his memo and the issues raised, if any, and you made it clear that you don't think there are any legal issues in your memo. I'm not smart enough to tell you whether you're right or wrong, and see if there's any issues from a legal perspective that we need guidance on. That's my, my suggestion that we do as a board. How do you feel about that, Mark?
You're muted.
I, I agree. I, I noticed that Mr. Arianti cited in, in his letter a case around a resort on Cape Cod that was primarily an accommodation and a meal establishment, and then they went to evening entertainment. And it changed the nature of the property and the impact. And it was sort of a mission creep situation. And I wouldn't mind some extra legal guidance on what happens with mission creep, if you understand that, that phrase, when a permit is granted and the activity is still related to what the original grant was, but has expanded to a degree that crosses a line. I don't know where that line is. And, and I'd like to get a little more guidance on that because we, we do have a case here, I would say, of mission creep. No board sat in this town in nineteen seventy-three or nineteen eighty-one and heard a description of an activity that would involve driving the bottle trucks, you know, picking up gas and, and driving it around to local residents. That has never been considered in, in, you know, by the boards that approve these permits. Yes, the historical use is for distribution of, of gas, but it was, distribution at that point was supplemental to, to the LNG that was being used. And so a lot of the focus in those meetings is on the safety of the tanks and whatnot because transportation wasn't a big theme in, in their review. Transportation is a, is a bigger theme in this discussion. So anyway, I wouldn't mind a little more guidance on the legalities of this before we, we make our decision.
All right. Any other comments? I'm sorry.
At the risk of irritating you or the board, you're quite right, I didn't submit any memo of law. I don't believe we were asked for a memo of law and I was hoping.
Well, you were asked for whatever memorandum you wanted to submit to any party, okay? That, that ship sailed two weeks ago.
Okay.
Okay?
Well, now that they have Mr. Arianti's
That was my
Letter. Do we expect a response from?
Well, why don't we do this?
Or do you wait?
Why don't we do this then? Why don't you, you want to write a reply, a rebuttal, get it to us on Wednesday?
You got it.
Get Mr., make sure you send a copy to Mr. Arianti for reasons that completely baffled me, why people don't share their information with the other side so that we don't have to go through this kibuki dance. It's a source of unending frustration in the forty years I've been a lawyer. And you can smile all you want. You didn't share it with him. He didn't share it with you. You know, we're not playing, you know, in the fifth grade kickball league, you know? It makes life a lot easier for our board when everybody's fully prepared, fully informed. So I would ask that you send whatever it is you're going to send to the board and to Mr. Arianti by Wednesday. So we can have a chance to look at it. And if we need some additional consultation, we've, our town council creeped, perceived, we then have that opportunity. Fair enough?
That's tomorrow, right? Wednesday?
How about Thursday? Thursday's fine.
What's acceptable?
Well, we're not, it's our, our call. He wants to write something.
Thursday.
He can write it up by Thursday. He's got a big
I just haven't, look, we did submit a letter last week. I appreciate that it was late. I want the opportunity to review it, that's all. And if the chair is correct, that, that the burden is on them, I just want the opportunity to respond.
Sure.
Sure.
All right.
So thank you.
Okay, fair enough. So we'll see everybody next Tuesday at seven.
I'm not going to be here.
And I promise you.
Tom, Tom. Have another.
I'm not going to be here on Tuesday. I'm coming back the twenty-seventh.
Right, because someone else was going to sit in for the
Can they do that?
Can't sit in for this one.
So when are you back?
Twenty-seventh late, so twenty-eighth, really.
That's next Wednesday or Thursday?
Yeah.
How about the following Tuesday then? You ready for that? What does that do with our dates? For the making a decision, Theresa? Don't we have a deadline for that? Oh, it's on my sheet.
But if
Way out, I think.
But if Attorney Arianti agrees.
There's another on the twenty-seventh.
We have one next week also.
Next week.
Yeah, but that's a different matter. We'll worry about that. But see, I can't really.
You're back on the twenty-eighth?
Yes.
All right, well.
Meet on a different day of the week or can't we do that?
Can we, could we meet on a different
You can meet whenever you want.
Can we meet on leap year day?
Hundred days of petition. Hundred days.
What does that do?
Somebody did the calculation last time.
We did, but I don't remember what I wrote down.
Thought it was way out in March.
So we'll do it then.
The twenty-eighth.
What's the next Tuesday?
Well, I come back the twenty-seventh, but I won't get home till
What's the next Tuesday actually?
Well, the following day.
March fifth.
March fifth, yep.
I'm not available at all.
Okay.
On March fifth?
I have another hearing in great
What do we do?
We will not be here either.
Can we do Thursday the twenty-ninth? Will we be back?
Bye.
Twenty, wait.
Zoom in.
The twenty-ninth. Yep.
So you have an issue, Catherine? Okay. What other dates can we do then?
The twenty-ninth is okay.
Not for her.
I could, I didn't hear her.
First?
How about the first?
Works for me. Yep.
Friday.
Friday?
Friday night.
Friday night?
Friday the first?
I'm not available, but you guys can do it without me.
I'm available.
Yes.
Yeah, it's okay, okay for me.
When, when do you, when do you depart, Nick? I assume you're going. You, you've got a hearing. Is that what, that's our problem?
That's on the fifth.
What about, do Wednesdays ever work?
Six is fine.
Can we, once to the twenty-eighth? You're not back by the twenty-eighth, right?
I am. I'll be here the twenty-eighth.
Let's do it, twenty-eighth.
Can we do it the twenty-eighth? How does that work for the attorneys? Nick, is that okay?
It's for me.
All right, so we'll be here the twenty-eighth then. We'll also be here the twenty-seventh.
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
Does that work?
I'll be here, I have to go to work.
You can zoom in or?
I just, I'll be in an airplane.
Why not? I understand.
My wife will be here.
I'll be here.
Okay.
I appreciate that. All right. So we will be back here on the twenty-eighth to finish the, to complete the the hearing, seven, eight, seven P M. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.